July 11th meeting to order. George, take role.
Sure, Colonel Evans.
Here.
Mr. Grozan.
Here.
Mrs. Ludwig.
Here.
Mr. Miko.
Here.
Mr. Nasa.
Here.
All present.
Stand for the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
District goals, we always talk about our district goals. Student achievement and financial prudence and everything, every decision we make during these meetings is balancing those two goals against each other. That's all I'll say about that for today. I don't see any public comments slips currently, so we will move on to six. Treasury report.
Thank you, Mr. Nasa. I have one item for your consideration tonight, and it is the resolution for the renewal of an existing tax levy for the purpose of current expenses. It be resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer that a resolution pursuant to section 5705.212 of the Ohio Vice Code submitting to the electors of Strongsville City School District that question of the renewal of all of an existing tax levy for the purpose of current expenses be approved. You will find the resolution in Exhibit A. As mentioned last week, this is the second of two resolutions for the expiring six mil five year renewal levy to be on the ballot for the November 8th elections. This resolution accepts the county certification of the levy and total tax valuation. If this resolution is approved tonight, I will file both resolutions along with the certification to the Board of Elections first thing tomorrow morning. That would can get an issue number and the committee can move forward with the campaigning. And also, as mentioned, this levy was set to expire, or is set to expire in tax year 2016 and collection year 17. Currently, the levy generates about 7.9 million if collected in full, and that is also the number you will find on the resolution that the county certified. And at our current collection rate, we collect about 7.6 million of it. To be clear, this is not a tax increase. The renewal is to maintain our current tax collections. When the levy was originally passed in 2002, was passed to collect a certain dollar amount as properties' values have increased throughout the years due to House Bill 920. The millage effective rate lowers, so we collect the same amount that the intended levy was originally intended for with the exception of any new construction. Just an example, this six mil levy, their effective rate is as if it was a 5.46 mils against today's property values.
Thank you.
So I have it, and I'll turn it over for a discussion.
Kind of a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Duke. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, George. Any discussion? I might only like to say that in business, there's a saying that says money goes where it's want, where it's requested, and stays where it's treated well. And it's going to be our intention over the next, for a while, to show you that we've treated your money well. We're doing everything we can, the best we can, to maximize the return on every dollar we get, and that's what this board's all about. So we will, we're going to take it upon ourselves to make sure that we can demonstrate that to you, so we can earn your respect and your vote. So.
I'd second that call. I also want to commend George for a good job on both of those actions that had to be taken here. This is the second one. Thorough job and a very good explanation. Thank you.
All right, take a vote. Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Nasa?
Yes.
Motion passes. And that concludes my report. Thank you. Superintendent's report?
Thank you, Mr. Nasa. I have three items under timely information to update the community and the board. First, I wanted to give an update on the Drake auction. At our last board meeting, the vote, the board approved us to move forward with auctioning off the Drake property. Last week on Wednesday, Mark Donley, George, our, one of our lawyers, Dave Riley, and I met with a possible auction firm, and we had a very successful meeting, and they are, Dave Riley and the auction firm are working on a proposal, and hopefully we'll have a finalized contract with the auction firm to move forward in auctioning off the process. In the past couple of meetings, I know there's been a lot of questions about process. We're able to answer those now since we met with them. A couple that I would just like to highlight tonight. First of all, this auction is going to be a reserve auction. What that means is that the board reserves the right to either approve or deny the highest bidder. It doesn't mean there's a reserve price. There will be no minimum bid on this auction, simply that the decision will be left with the board and your consideration and approval. This will also be in what would they call an open outcry auction, so people, it's not sealed bids, it's open bidding. They will, as we kind of know a traditional auction, there will be a starting bid, and people would bid openly on the property.
It'll be like Storage Wars?
Like Storage Wars.
Yup.
What will happen is when we talk to them is the auction will likely occur at a hotel. It won't occur at Drake Elementary. What these auction houses do is they auction off a series of properties at one time. So although there will be open houses at the Drake property for potential buyers and interested bidders to go through and walk through and see the property more closely, our property is likely to be bundled with other properties at a set date and time. Once we finish and finalize the proposal with the auction house, we are planning on six weeks of marketing and advertising. This is the only outright cost to the district. We would have to pay the advertising fees, and they're coming up with a line item budget of what that would cost. That would cover digital media, that would cover print media, it would be in The Post, it would be in The Sun, it would be in The Plain Dealer, it would be in Cranes, it would be in a few other print publications, as well as sent out electronically to their vast database of buyers, as well as to the local realty market to see the interest there. So we're projecting, if things work right by the end of September, mid to end of September is when Drake will actually go up for auction, but that's tentative at this point. So in the next week or so, we hope to finalize our agreement with the auction house, and once that's done, we'll get the marketing and advertising going. It will be highly publicized. And then again, what will happen at the end is the board will see only the highest bidder. The highest bidder at the auction will sign off on all the necessary paperwork and, you know, provide some earnest money there, and then the board will be presented with the entire package of the highest bidder and make a decision at that time, whenever that meeting is, on the highest bidder. So that's where we're at at this point in time, and I'll answer any questions about the Drake auction or the process if you have them.
Cameron, the one thing that we've heard from a lot of people was the intended use. Can we as a board specify that that's what, that we would like to ask of the bidder? How do we know, or how do we identify purpose of use?
Thanks for bringing that up, George. That's an important point. We talked about that, is there will be a stipulation on the bidding documents that they must state their clear and intended use of that property. Now, we also talked about, well, you know, we always believe most people are honest, but what if somebody buys the property, says it's the intended use, and then they, you know, change their purpose once the deal is done? The last, the last, can't think of the word, but the last line of defense, so to speak, is the city council. Because city council, they would have to go to city council for rezoning of the property most likely, and all the, you know, building documents. So they would be another step that could prevent that from happening, but there will be a stipulation that on the bids, they must state their clear and intended purpose of the property.
Thank you.
Cameron, you mentioned that it was going to be bundled, and I just want to be clear that you're not saying it's going to be bundled into an auction. It's just going to be part of a bundle of auctions, would people be able to bid on it separately?
Correct. So as we've seen, you know, some of their auctions have eight different properties, so buyers can go through there, and they will specifically bid on the Drake Elementary School property.
I have a question for you. Why do we only see just the top bidder? I mean, like, what if we wanted, the second highest bidder is going to put it to a better use that we would be more approving of? Why can't we pick the one we want?
From, we did, that's a great question, Colonel Evans. We talked about that, and what the guidance was is by statute, we have to go through the auction process. And by that, you would go through the auction process by looking at the top bidder. Now, should the board decide to not go with that top bidder? That's where, remember, the next step is that private sale. The auctioneer will keep and track all of the other interested bidders, and at that time, the board, if you refuse that top bid, would direct George and I to move forward with the private sale, which would be the fact where the board can review and our legal folks can begin to negotiate with other bidders on selling it, but it would be through a private sale instead of an auction.
Right, but I'm just, what I'm saying is, would we have any knowledge of who the other bidders were? As you outlined it, we wouldn't.
You would, you could, you would have knowledge of those other bidders, but in terms of the auction, you would only vote on that one.
Okay. I just want to make sure we see the list.
Sure.
If the top guy's good, that's fine, but if there's somebody, you know, if Christie's gets the top bid, then we're not going to let them come in, so.
No, that won't happen. If, does the top bidder have recourse if we just decline it? There's nothing, they haven't, there's no recourse for them? If we just say no, we just don't like the bid?
No, because the bidding documents will specifically state that the decision lies with you.
Okay, sounds good.
Sounds like a plan.
All right, we will move forward. Thank you. The second item that I wanted to share with the board and get your feedback, and also share with the community is student fees. We've been talking over the last year of, and through George's work in his department to increase collections on student fees, and, you know, we've been averaging the last few years about $100,000 in uncollected student fees, which mean we have to divert funds away from other educational programs to supplant that deficit. So George and I worked on some procedures that we would like to implement in the 1617 school year for collection of student fees. Again, just to be clear, this is not policy, so this is not something that's voted upon or approved by the board. It's procedures that I, as superintendent, can act, but in looking for your feedback and input on it. So we've broken this up, and in front of you, you have a document that's stated student fee collection procedures. So what we've broken this into is current year school fees, current year athletic fees, and then previous fees that are still due. So going through the number one and two, basically what we're stating is we're going to mail out, like we typically do, all of the student fees. We'll share those with the family, we'll give them a window to pay. Typically, it's been about September to October has been the timeline. We also have, and number two, it makes special note, we have semester classes at the high school, so if you're in the second semester class, your fees will not go out until the second semester, so there's a little different timeline for there. But we give everybody months to pay their fees. If you don't pay your school fees by the last day of school prior to winter break, or the last day of February for second semester, we're suggesting the following consequences for the lack of payment. First is number three states, we would shut off the past account for students and families. Number four, the students would not be permitted to participate in any school sanctioned extracurricular activities such as students' council, school clubs, et cetera. Those clubs have rosters, we would look at those rosters just like we look at athletic teams, and if they don't pay, we would share with those students that they're no longer permitted to be participating in that extracurricular activity. Again, looking at what's a right versus a privilege. These are things that are added on to enhance, and we're looking at that as a possible consequence for not paying fees. Number five, as we know and we've talked about, seniors will not be permitted to walk at commencement ceremonies until all fees current and past are paid. And then finally, transcripts and records will not be released for students until fees current and past are paid. So if a student leaves our district and goes to another district, we can hold, other than special education records, we can hold all other records to get that payment in. So those are the procedures we're looking for the current school year, for school fees. In terms of athletic fees, we charge a pay to participate fee as well as a trainer fee, and we are stating that all of those fees must be in prior to the first competition, the first official game. So this is not practices, it's not scrimmages, it's, you know, the first football game if we don't have payment in. The consequence for that is the student athlete would be completely removed from the team until the full payment is received. One of the things we are making an effort to eliminate is pay to participate fees being added to the account. You know, again, sports are an integral part of what we do, but also, it's a privilege to play in sports, and we feel that our pay to participate fees are reasonable, especially with our family cap, and are looking at that, those procedures for our current athletic fees. Any questions on the practices or feedback for current school fees or current athletic fees?
I have a few things, sorry. Who's going to be responsible for making sure these students are complying? Is it the advisor of the club or activity? Is it the coach of the activity? Is it George? Is it, who's going to oversee this?
The athletic director would oversee all of athletics. So he would, it's a relationship between the coaches and the athletic director, so the coaches are also a piece of this, but ultimately, whether a student's going to be on the sideline or not is, the athletic director's an administrative responsibility.
Okay.
In terms of the extracurriculars and clubs, again, it will be the advisor, but the implementer of it will be the principal. So what we will be sharing when George and I discuss this, of the clubs should have rosters. We can keep those rosters and cross-reference those with our owed fee list, and so the principals would have to notify and ensure that those participants that haven't paid their fees are no longer participating.
And how does this pertain to the free and reduced lunch students? Are they exempt from our fees currently, and are, how is that, so they're protected as far as who they are and not?
Our students that are on free lunch do not pay school fees, so they would not show a balance and they would not appear on a list. Our students that are on a reduced lunch plan, they are responsible for the full amount and would be held to the same procedures.
Okay, so if they're trying out for the football team, say, they know themselves that they're not going to pay that fee, or the coach knows, or how do they make sure they don't get on that list?
George, you want to answer?
So the pay to participate, that everybody has to pay the pay to participate, it's the student consumable workbook fees, those fees that the student with the free lunch is exempt from.
Okay.
So the trainer fees and the pay to play, regardless if you're on free reduced.
Okay, so that applies to all?
Right.
Okay, and then my last question is, how does college credit plus play into this? If you have outstanding college credit plus fees, are you still able to participate again your next year, or is that, because there's a cost to that?
So that would be, with those fees, we don't typically find out until after the semester's over, when a student has either failed the class or did not withdraw until after the deadline, and the guidance counselor doesn't find out until after the fact. So for instance, that would be any prior year fees.
Okay.
That would fall under that. So we saw a lot this year, not a lot, but we saw a handful that came on after the school year was over, once the guidance counselors were notified.
That's all I have for this.
The two questions I had, one question slash comment. I noticed in the procedure, we're talking about mailing the notices. I know we're doing work in that direction already, but more and more, I don't want anything in the mail. You have my email address, send it online. I don't get a credit card statement in the mail anymore. I don't, you know, I, it is a surprise for me when I get mail that I actually care about. And I would assume that most people are in a similar way, so I would want to address that for both reasons. It addresses how we, how parents prefer to get things, and two, with mail at 50 cents a letter, it's not insignificant. It does, it does add up. So that would just be something, I know we're always looking at, but we can, we can look at again.
I'll see if we can push, we have, through our new online forum system, we have the ability to push via email, and it links with Power School, so I'll see if we could do the same thing with the fee statements. It's a good suggestion.
And again, whether we have the ability to do that, most of those, you opt in and you sign a form saying, "I no longer want mailed notices," and it'd be nice if we could emulate or copy that method. And then the other question, what consideration or what was the reasoning behind the pay to participate fees being due before the first competition versus before the first practice?
The difficult, we talked about this with our athletic directors and our secondary administration. First of all, it was the difference between cut sports and non-cut sports. The fact that, you know, you don't want to, even though tryouts are usually pretty quick, you don't want to say everybody's money's due, and then you cut, a student gets cut in the next couple of days. So it was cleaner just to move it on. And the second part was really the health and safety of the students, that if they were going to participate, it gave people a little more time to see if it was for them, and if they were going to participate, we wanted to ensure our athletes were conditioned and well-prepared. So that's why, it's been our past practice to been the first competition. Now, I will be honest to say, it wasn't adhered to strictly, but it will be moving forward, and so we decided that that would be the best plan of attack, would be to stick with at the beginning of the season.
And I guess that would be my follow-up comment. I mean, we all know that in the past, it seemed like there were different rules for every sport, and, rules is the wrong word, but different procedure, different, some people had better religion at collecting and reminding and some other. I mean, I don't have any issues with the procedures we have in place. It's incumbent on us, it's incumbent on our administrators that they be held accountable, that, you know, real quick, real quick pay to participate fees are going to get paid if it's Friday Night Lights and you can't play.
Yes, I completely agree, Mr. Miko. And we've shared this with Mr. Jawan, and he's reviewed it as well, and he understands the procedures, is supportive of the procedures, and I think, you know, something, we finally put something in writing that's going to help and carry some weight as well. Moving on, just quickly, the last part, or two parts I want to share with you is, we do have families that have a significant amount of previous balance. It's like anything, you know, it builds and builds and builds, and now we have some families that have six to seven, $800 bills that they owe the district. So nine through 11 detail the fact of, if we have any students with any fees owed from 15, 16, or prior, the following consequences will be enacted. First of all, the student will not be able to participate in school or athletic field trips. Number 10, the student will not be able to participate in any school dances that require a purchase ticket. And any student with a previous school or athletic fee balance for any sport will be removed from the team prior to the first competition, or will not be able to participate in the extracurricular activities. So if I'm a volleyball player and I have any previous balance, it's not about just paying my current year's pay to participate fee, I've got to zero out all my prior balance if I want to pay volleyball. But what we think, we think we've been fair, that we understand that some folks have a substantial sum, and, you know, these school fees, we've worked hard to reduce our school fees, but they are a sum of money. So we've looked at the fact that if parents and families are willing to work with us, we will put them on a payment plan. So that's what 12 through 16 states. It says, "Any family at any time can contact the treasurer's office and request to be put on a payment plan for current fees or past fees." Families, 13 families unable to pay their current fees with documented financial difficulties will be put on that plan. And also, George and his office are going to go through and prioritize the past fees, starting with the most significant amount down, and will be reaching out to them and specifically directly saying, "We are putting you on a payment plan, now let's work on the terms of what that will be." What we hope is, even though we've listed all these consequences, what number 15 says is if we put you on a payment plan and you adhere to that payment plan, all those consequences are null and void. So if all you can afford is $50 a month, and we say you're going to pay us $50 on the first of every month, and you keep up with that, you can go to the dances, you can go to the field trips, you can participate in the sports, you can be in the clubs. However, what number 16 says is if you promise and say you're going to be on this payment plan and you don't, you don't meet the terms of the payment plan, all of the other consequences are put into effect. So we tried to balance, and personally, we understand that sometimes payment of fees is an adult issue, and we don't want to punish our students for adult issues, but we need some mechanism. We're not, every year, we're not talking about $100,000 deficit that we have to cover because of these fees. So that is the plan. If there's any feedback, questions at this time, I'll entertain those.
Is question nine, is consequence nine in 11, is that redundant, the second half? A student will be able to participate in school or athletic field trips, and down here, a student with previous athletic fee balances will not be permitted. Is this, one relates to pre, previous years? It all relates to previous years? So it looks, looks like they're both, looks like it's the same thing.
You're right, as I look at it, it's probably redundant. Maybe I can clarify there that it's including field trips.
Okay.
Because as we've talked about earlier, we have teams that will go in the summer before maybe the season officially starts.
Oh, okay, all right, leave it, I mean, it can't hurt, but it just seemed like, I wasn't sure what it was.
It makes, that makes sense, because there's a lot of teams that will go to a tournament or a competition prior to, right at the end of conditioning before the first competition, or I should say, league competition. I'd actually like it separated.
Yeah, I have a couple of things for you. First of all, for general knowledge, since this board took office, we've pushed on this and have cut this balance by half. It was over $200,000, and that was ridiculous. And so now it's down to around 96, 97, George?
Somewhere in that range, 97, 98.
Yeah, so I mean, that's significant, 50% progress, so I commend you both for that, and all the administrators as well. I have a suggestion, instead of a letter, how about a postcard? Might save the postage, it would be cheaper than a letter. And, you know, it's the same difference, like Richard says, if they want to chuck it, that's fine, they're still responsible. The other thing, Cameron, I think, and we're doing it tonight, but we really need to publicize this before the start of the school year here, because there will still be kids that walk in like deer in the headlights going, "What? I can't play, why not?" So we need to make sure, and we appreciate your help in getting the word out on this too, so that everybody understands clearly before it starts that you're responsible for these fees and for the extracurriculars. Like Cameron said, this is not the core education that you're entitled to by tax dollars. This is the extra stuff that you participate in, and it costs money to do these things, so we need to share the wealth with the parents and with the kids that pay their own fees and make sure that we get the appropriate fees in. So that's what I had to say.
Karen, will this be in the handbooks?
This specifically, the athletic fees will be in the handbook, but the other ones, it's too late, they've already been sent to the printer, we'll get it. But what we will do is, this week, we will send out, we will put this on our website, we will send out one of our e-updates that provides a link to it, sharing the new procedures that are in place, based on any tweaks I didn't need to make, but, and then we'll remind as we get closer to the school year, and then we're going to put it in a format where, you know, Andy can give it to all the coaches and have that there, because that's going to be our most immediate group that's going to have to catch up, because, you know, practice will start here in a few weeks.
Okay. Very impactful, we can have a $60 with the superintendent.
That's right.
This is a good job on this. The most important thing is at the end, where, you know, if you work with us and you set up a payment plan, you know, your children, the children don't have to miss anything. And I understand that money's difficult at times, and it is an adult issue at times as well, but if you work with us and you come see George, no child has to miss out on any athletic event, any extracurricular, anything. Just work with us, that's all we ask, something reasonable.
Thank you, Mr. Nasa and the board, for your feedback. The last item that I'd like to share with you is another procedural update that will be implemented for the 1617 school year, and that, this is in regards to our transportation program. We met with the policy committee a few weeks ago, and there is a policy in terms of transportation which specifically states, and I'll read it, it says, "It's the policy of the Board of Education to provide transportation for those students whose distance from their school makes this service necessary within the limitations established by state law." So our policy makes no mention of our rules of who gets transported or who doesn't. The state law says this, it says that a district is required to transport all students grades K to 8 that live two or more miles away. So that's what it's referencing to. So that's what it's referencing to. What I shared with the policy committee is that I would be moving forward and got their feedback and support to move forward with a change in procedure and practice. Our current practice, so as I said, state says two miles or more K to eight. Our practice as a district is we transport all students pre-K to 12 that live one mile or more from our district. That has been our practice for a long time. But it does cause some challenges sometimes as to where you live on a certain street. Am I at a mile, am I slightly under, am I slightly over? For clarity and communication, we've been working with this idea with our transportation department and will move forward with it. That we will move away from the one mile limit and go to non-bussing streets with the one mile limit as our guide. So what we will be posting is a listing of every building and streets that attend that building that will not be transported. And we will share that like we will with the, the fees, we will put it on the website, we will update it. So for example, it will say Chapman Elementary, Alpine Circle. If you live on Alpine Circle, you will not get transportation because you're within or close to that one mile range. So every building has all the streets. We feel this is nice not only for our current residents, but if I'm a family moving into a neighborhood and I wonder, I can look and see, okay, I, do I get busing or don't I get busing? We've also compared this to our current practices and unfortunately, this will impact one family. We have one family that currently gets busing that with this new practice will not get busing. But everybody else that has had busing in the previous year will have busing in the future. So I will be working with that one family to.
Do they currently use the bus?
They currently use the bus, yes.
What grade is their, are their?
They've got a couple of kids in the elementary school.
You say you're going to work with them?
Yeah, so I'll work with them and communicate with them the change. But that is the change that we're going to implement for 16, 17. Amongst some of the other changes we've talked about with transportation, wanted to open it up for any feedback or discussion on this practice change.
How far is that family, like are they point eight miles or, you know?
They're about one mile and maybe twenty feet.
I'd say grandfather. I mean, that's my thought.
Work with them.
So I was just going to add a few comments as, as one of the members of the policy committee. But we've dealt with this on, on a number of years and a number of occasions. And the only time it becomes sticky is when you're within, within the margins of error. And we've had situations before where parents who have wanted the busing have questioned the procedure. And we would get into situations where we're getting out wheels and arguing over, are we, are we going down the sidewalk? Or are we going to the middle of the road? And, you know, you're, you're moving that wheel in a way that benefits some supposed agenda. Or benefits me getting the busing or benefits me not getting the busing. The list of streets that we're publishing, one thing to be clear on is, is these are all, all of these streets that are non-bussing are well within our margin. Or of our requirements by the state. There are no, there are no streets that are close to two miles or what have you. As Mr. Riva pointed out, we have one, we have one family that we'll work with. The rest are, are not affected differently. They're, they're affected the same way. What, what this does do is it gets us away from maintaining wheels and, and doing these kinds of situations that would creep up periodically. It's a much clearer way, whether you're, whether you live here, but more primarily for people that are considering moving here. It's very clear, you'll be able to go on the website, you'll be able to know, is my home prospectively something that I would get busing for or not? But I think this is a much clearer procedure and it, and now happens to be a very good time to do it. Because we have a lot of changes in schools, so it's a good time to make that change as far as with the middle schools. With Albion closing, there's going to be people who used to walk to Albion who will no longer walk to Strongsville Middle School. And with Drake closing, there's just a lot of change and this will aid in making it easier to understand for those families that are affected.
Cameron, just to be clear, the state requirements dictate that we have to bus if a child's further than two to three miles.
Two miles or more is the rule?
Two miles or more. We have traditionally in Strongsville made a policy, our own internal policy of one mile or more. So we're half of what the state requires.
Correct, as well as busing high school, which is not a state requirement.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So if there's no other feedback, we will also share that in an email update so parents are aware of that. And I appreciate the time and feedback on all those items. Under business services, there are no items for your consideration, just to say pupil services is completely gone. Center, the building is all down. Now they finished demolishing it today. And the high school field, the entire playing surface is in. And they are, they are finishing up the groundwork for the middle school field, they're there working now, so.
I was there the other night, I, I, my wife prevented me from jumping the fence, otherwise I'd have been on that field. But the, I didn't notice the Strongsville or any of the graphics on it, do they put that on after?
Yeah, so what they're doing now is they have the entire playing surface done. They're doing the, the sidelines now, they're, they're, they're putting those in, they were finishing those when I was there tonight. And they'll do the rest of the D areas. But then they actually go in and cut in the rest of the, so the S will be cut in. In the end zones, it will say Mustangs, those are all individually sewn in and cut in, so that will be the next step.
Look beautiful.
It's, it looks great, it looks great.
It was neat, I was over and across the street on, on Saturday, there were about fifteen people standing up in the cemetery. Watching the building come down, so they were pretty impressive. It was like, when they took the bricks, I equated it to slicing off kernels of corn from a corn cob. Because the bricks just came falling off, it was amazing. So I don't know if people are collecting their bricks, but they are down by the pupil services, well, what used to be pupil services.
That's correct, yeah, there's a pile still there and we'll replenish as, as long as necessary.
We had one gentleman with a pickup truck take a whole pallet of bricks, a whole pallet of bricks.
How's that patio coming, George?
Ah, it wasn't me, it wasn't me.
Well, you know, that's, that's the fact that like ninety-five percent of the bricks in the world are reused bricks.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so those are valuable, excellent.
So we are moving along, things are going well. Under item C curriculum, we do have one item for your consideration. Be it resolved the recommendation of the superintendent that the district pays to purchase the Amendment Solutions Curriculum. At an approximate cost of one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents. To be utilized in the Strongsville Academy for the 2016, 17 school year. If the board remembers, this was Steve Brechner's presentation, how we're going to consolidate. This will save the district funds moving forward. Any questions for curriculum? Under student services, we have four items for your consideration. Tuition free admission for a foreign exchange student. We do have one foreign exchange student from Italy to be entered tuition free for the 16, 17 school year. Under number two, the recommendation that we enter into a contract with Kids Link Neuro Behavioral Center. For the placement of student with disabilities for the 16, 17 school year at a cost of seventy-seven thousand, fifty dollars. Under number three, a recommendation to enter in an agreement with Solutions Behavior Consulting for the 16, 17 school year. To provide consult, consultation to staff and students in the area of behavioral interventions, which can be found in exhibit C. And finally, the recommendation that we enter in an agreement with Solutions Behavior Consultant for 16, 17. To assist teachers and students in the area of behavioral intervention services. By providing consult, consultation to implementing training for staff to be credentialed as registered behavior technicians, which is found in exhibit B. Questions on student services? With that, Jenny, we'll go through the human resource report, Jenny?
Good evening. Under human resources this evening, I have the following items for your consideration. Under E1, we have the resignation of Elise Galizio, music teacher that is currently on parental leave. We wish Elise, Elise the very best, she's decided to be a stay-at-home mom, so. We also have the resignation of Sally Leahy, cafeteria cook assigned to Strongsville High School. Wish her the best as well, she's served the district well and wish her all the best. Under E2, we have the appointment of Cara Kuken Dahl, new speech language pathologist. And again, that's appointment is contingent upon her receiving her license. She just finished up all of her coursework, so she should be getting that relatively soon. It's, it's almost just a formality, everything is complete. Under E3, we have the following changes in status for our non-certificated folks. I would like to highlight Karen Rich, who's sitting in the audience here tonight. You know, Karen was riffed from a cafeteria manager, she was the cafeteria manager at Drake. And she remained positive and upbeat the entire time. And now is going to be serving us in our treasurer's department as a data input specialist. So congratulations to you Karen, thank you for your positive attitude.
Thank you.
Under E4, we have the following changes in titles for our administrative folks. And I would like to personally congratulate Vicki Turner for her new title of Director of Instructional Technology. Well deserved, Vicki.
Well earned.
I also have various changes in titles for our leadership folks. Under E5, I have changes in contracted days for three of our administrators. From two fifteen to two sixty and Mark Smith Berger will now be also two sixty. We also have a change in contracted days for our leadership folks. Our parent mentor Teresa Karznak will go down to one hundred and ninety-five days. Under E6, I have the following salary placements for our new administrative handbook. The following certified administrative employees will be placed on the following performance levels. Under E6, I have the same salary placements for our leadership. And under E7, we have a salary placements for those that are receiving a leadership degree incentive. Under E8, we have stipends for our non-certificated staff for extended school year. Under E9, we have one family medical intermittent leave. Under E10, I have one injury leave there. Under E11, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education enters into agreement. With the Partners for Success and Innovation PSI to service pupils attending St. Joseph and John. Under auxiliary funding administered to approve non-public schools by local districts.
Hey Jenny, just a moment, Cameron on number 10. Okay, I'm presuming this is a non-the-job injury, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Do we, as a matter of course, review our safety practices when somebody gets hurt like this? To see if there's any procedures that need to be changed or any other training that needs to be accomplished to prevent recurrence?
Correct, so it's all automated, we have an online system that, you know, shares with one of Ruth Ann Franzek in George's office. We review that, we actually have a part, whoever's the supervisor to investigate it. There's additional at-time safety training for the employee. And as you said Colonel, we review our procedures, we review how the accident happened. For example, you know, if, if there was a stair that somebody slipped on, we send somebody to say, does it need to be retread? Is there an issue there? So that is a matter of course every time somebody is injured. Some of these are just purely accidents that unfortunately happened to the employee, but we do that as a matter of course.
Do we have any ongoing safety inspections?
We have.
Other than like buses?
Well, we have, we have equipment inspection, so all of our maintenance department and custodial staff with, they have routine maintenance equipment checks. We have district-wide safety training that's unique to the different jobs that we have. And we have ongoing certifications for the more specific jobs. So, you know, we have folks that spray chemicals, they get certified. We have people that use chainsaws, we have different certifications for them. So yes, it's, we have people that we keep track of, that we recertify them. And then we have blanket trainings that we do for all staff.
Do we do any like building inspections for safety items like the stair treads that you mentioned? Or other hazards that, potential hazards that could be, you know, an ounce of prevention's worth of pounding stairs, I'm getting at?
That is overseen by our head custodians at the building, so there's visual checks each day and through our evening custodians. For example, there's a daily playground inspection that's had, that occurs by our custodial staff. And as our custodial staff is cleaning, so that is a part of their duties to let us know as well. We did start implementing this year, visual inspections by supervisors. So Kelly Quinn and now Mark Donley will do that, will, will go and check specific areas of buildings to make sure.
Let's talk offline, let's talk after this for a minute, I have an idea.
Okay.
Thank you, sorry.
That's okay. Under E12.
Just one point, there, there are no accidents, just poorly executed processes.
Like a true account CPA, right?
Under E12, I have the following volunteers for chaperones. Under E13, we have the substitute rates for our certificated staff. We're going to a daily rate of ninety dollars per diem. And when they're in consecutive assignments, day one through 10 would be ninety dollars and day 11 through 60 would be ninety-five. And under E14, I have one termination for your consideration. This does require a vote. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent to terminate any and all employment contracts of Nicola Mandic. Effective immediately pursuant to ORC 3319.081.
So moved.
Do you have a motion? Thank you Duke, do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you George, any discussion?
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Skrozen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Sir Nisa?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you Jenny, we do have one item under technology, we did have an addendum, the green sheet that was added. Vicki Turner, if you could come up to the, the podium and share your item and what it will do for the district.
Thank you and good evening. Also celebrating my fifth year in the district. This day, five years ago, the board recommended me for hire.
Congratulations.
Our technology upgrades, we are purchasing the Chromebooks as we've talked about before. We have been waiting and working on pricing, so we were able to get the Chromebooks for cheaper than we originally thought and the license. So be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education approves the purchase of 1,010 Chromebooks. 1,010 Google Chrome licenses not to exceed two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. And then we will purchase those immediately and begin working on those. Those are being distributed mostly to the one-to-one initiative at the high school and to the middle school. All of the other Chromebooks from Drake have, are being distributed to the elementaries to bring us up to that eighty percent level. So once these are in, we will be at eighty percent, through, almost eighty percent throughout the district, one-to-one. And then our, all of our ninth graders will have their own Chromebook and we will go from there.
Excellent, and these are the same models that you demoed here, the one night?
Yes, these are the Dell's, the Dell 11, very rugged, very durable, this is what we wanted and we were able to get them cheaper.
And you, you reduced the price from?
Two forty, two eighty-eight to two hundred.
Wow, that's nice.
Since you had the extra forty bucks or so, were you able to buy any more? Did you want to buy any more, volume-wise?
We haven't, we, we don't need to right now as far as the pilot. That money will help in our reserve fund to start to replace Chromebooks as, as they start to go. So we have that repair replace fund. So, you know, as of right now, we're, we won't be spending that.
Okay.
Okay.
I just, I, I just have a comment. I'll never forget the first task force meeting and Jane, you were there with, with Mr. Karpinski and, and Jenny, I think you were there too. I was astounded by the idea that we didn't have wireless in any of our buildings. I was honestly very disappointed, almost disgusted that our computer labs was running. God, Richard, you'd probably know, it was like five versions old of Microsoft. This was four years ago. It's not just a couple of steps forward, and not just a couple of leaps forward, it's been a quantum step forward. And I thank the administration, I thank you Vicki. I really have to say thank you to the taxpayers of Strongsville. Because not only did this initiative start with a bond, which Carl, I'll never forget you, Jimmy and Matt staying in front of the board meeting, starting that. It was kind of like the spark for the work that we did. But what in education our children's can have now, not just the children whose parents can afford a computer at home. But every child in our district. And this will change the way we educate our children and how they're prepared to go to college. Cause like, you know, I, I smiled internally because Richard, you talk about, you know, those bills that you get in. Cause like, you know, I, I smiled internally, because Richard, you talk about, you know, those bills that you get an email. I'm the old fogey that still likes my paper, right? But my kids will never have that experience. So, I just, eh, thank you to the taxpayers, thank you to the administration, the board members. We have taken this district, and, and I say it all the time Cameron, we want to become an elite district. These are the things we have to do to get that, so, um, not saying everybody needs to pat themselves on the back because we need to keep going, but just a reflection of where we've been four years ago to where we are today. It's a wonderful thing that we're doing for our children, everyone's children.
Well, and to piggyback onto that, thank you to all the teachers that have embraced the technology. It wouldn't be successful without them going to classes and learning right along with their students. So, thank you so much for giving our students the opportunities to learn with all this technology.
Thank you.
Thank you Vicki. And with that, Mr. Nasa, that concludes my report.
Uh, that brings us to consent calendar. Um, all items with an asterisk, it approved in one vote, uh, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, have a second?
Second.
Thank you Jane, any discussion, I don't believe any modifications, uh, which is nice, and, uh, so we'll take a vote.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Nasa?
Yes.
Mr. Grozen?
Yes.
Motion passed.
That brings us to board policies, these are our first readings for these, is this?
Correct, so this is, uh, the policy committee met, um, you've been given an updated version of all of the policies, uh, through here. This would be the first reading, and as typical, I'm sure Mr. Miko is working up his comments, uh, for the third reading. Uh, so we, uh, if there's any questions, we can answer them at this point. Um, but these are the policies as approved by the policy committee for your consideration.
Excellent, okay. Um, that brings the Board of Education another. Do we have any other?
Yeah, I'd like to say one thing. As we approach the new school year, um, and all the, the projects are coming to fruition, and we just talked about the technology. We talked about the new turf fields at both schools, the brand-new, beautiful middle school that you can now see from Pearl Road. It really is awesome. And, and then the high school, which, you know, is still kind of a work in progress, but it's gonna be really awesome as well with the new parking lot, the new turf field, the new lighting, safety features. Um, I just wanted to commend my fellow board member here, George Grozen, and Carl for being on that facilities development committee and all the citizens that were there.
Who? Jane was on the original task force as well.
Jane, Jane was on the original one too. Uh, as somebody who was, you know, I, I visited a couple of times, one of you guys couldn't make it. But there was a heck of a lot of work that went into all of those things that are gonna put Strongsville in the, in the premium, primo school districts in the state of Ohio and actually in the country, I think. And all the dedicated work from the educators, from the staff that we have. Um, you know, the new superintendent, who has actually worked out, he was kind of shaky for a while there, but I think he's done a heck of a job over this year. The new treasurer, who really knows how to count his shekels and, uh, has done a tremendous job there along with his staff. So, uh, without, like George says, we're not patting ourselves on the back, anybody, uh, just because we're always moving forward here. This district is moving forward. But it is good to take time out every once in a while and say, "Job well done." And I would say that to you guys and to the administration and also to the, to our contractors and our architects. Uh, Mr. Riachi from RFC, all of those folks, uh, Strongsville is gonna be amazed in a couple of weeks when those new schools open up, it's really gonna be something. So, you know, I, I don't know if it's my place, Mr. President, not to say it, but I think it's, uh, really awesome and, uh, we should be very proud in this community of what we have, what we're gonna have here going forward for our kids and for our community, which is really our future.
Excellent, you gotta take time sometimes to celebrate your victories, because you have to, it helps you, it helps you keep moving, it energizes you and gets you moving forward.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any other comments?
Just it's homecoming week.
It's homecoming week, yeah, home days are this weekend, Wednesday, parades to birth, parades tomorrow and then through Saturday, so everybody get out and enjoy that.
Come see me at the PETA tent Wednesday night and Thursday night?
It's Wednesday, the parade is Wednesday.
Wednesday and Thursday night, I'll be at the PETA.
I think you said tomorrow. It's Tuesday.
Did I say tomorrow, tomorrow, maybe Wednesday, in a few hours. Wednesday, alright, so with that, um, we have another meeting, our next meeting will be August 4th and then we'll have another one on the 18th, both here. And I'm so pleased that there's air conditioning in this room, uh, this week, so nice job on that. And, uh, we do not have any need for executive session, um, do we have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
You, Duke?
Second.
Second by George. Vote.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Grozen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Nasa?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned at 7:56.
Another record.